Good evening. I'd like to call the special meeting of the City Council, the City of San Bruno, to order for August 5th. We have a study session this evening. If we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ruiain.
Here.
Mayor Fransella.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Okay. This evening, is there anyone here under public comment that would like to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the conduct of business. Item three, receive report regarding Centrum Logistics proposed project and environmental impacts to San Bruno. And City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As Mayor indicated, this is a study session tonight, and although we are set up in the same manner that we would ordinarily be set up for a regular City Council meeting, this is a study session, and we will not be asking, nor is there any action by the City Council anticipated. Our purpose tonight is to provide a presentation by your staff regarding a project that is of significant interest to the City of San Bruno, that is actually being processed through the approval procedure in the city of South San Francisco, our neighbor to the north. The project is expected to have some significant impacts on the city of San Bruno, particularly in the area of traffic and circulation, and it is for that reason that your staff has been spending a great deal of time over the last forty-five days, both internally as well as working with the applicant, Centrum Logistics, to develop both an understanding of the detail of the project, as well as to identify solutions to some of the issues that are of concern to the city of San Bruno. Our presentation tonight will have three basic parts. I've asked Community Development Director Erin Ackman to provide a brief overview of the project itself as we understand it, as well as to identify some of the issues that we have been working on over the last period of time. I will then ask the opportunity to present to you some information that we've had a brief opportunity to discuss with Centrum just earlier today, that represents a proposed solution or strategy, or a series of strategies, to address some of the issues that we're concerned about. And then, Centrum has asked for an opportunity to speak to you directly. There are numbers of representatives of the Centrum team in attendance tonight, and I'm sure those members will be introduced to you. And we would ask you for the opportunity for them to be able to present as well. There may be individuals in the audience who would also like the opportunity to speak, and although it's a study session, you're not required to do that, we would suggest that this is a discussion and information-sharing opportunity, and that is really our entire purpose tonight. With that, I'd ask Erin to give you a brief overview.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'll begin with the site description. As City Manager mentioned, this is somewhat of a unique site, in that it is in South San Francisco, but it's completely bordered, and the street access is completely in San Bruno. And overall, the site is about twenty-five acres. It's located just north of the Sky Park Airport Parking Center. It includes two parcels. There's about a twenty-eight, twenty-acre parcel, as well as a five-acre parcel. Currently, there is about a six-hundred-thousand-square-foot building on the site. The site history itself, it's a unique history. It's the largest parcel, the twenty-eight parcel, for the twenty-acre parcel, for the last fifty years, has been used by the federal government. It's primarily been used by the Post Office, as well as the DEA. However, both of these have been very low-impact uses. Sometimes, it was only a third full. It's hard to get the exact details of how it's been used, because it was used by the federal government, and they didn't have to report locally. The smaller site, the smaller parcel on the site, the five-acre parcel, was used for long-term airport parking, and that was just the northernmost site. The project itself, I'll just go briefly into the project description. The applicant, South City's applicant is here. They could go into more detail, or if I miss anything. The project proposes to convert the existing five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-square-foot building, and make it into an industrial complex. It's also proposing to add an additional, five additional ten-thousand-square-foot buildings, so about fifty-thousand additional square feet, to bring this to a total of six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-square-foot industrial complex. And to put that into some perspective, sometimes it's hard to visualize how much space that is. Best Buy in San Bruno is about twenty-five-thousand square feet, so it's about the size of twenty-four Best Buys in total square footage. Tanfran Mall, just the interior of the mall, including both the first and second floor, is about three-hundred-thousand square feet, so it's about twice the size of both the first and second floors of Tanfran. So it's a rather large building. There aren't too many buildings of this side within San Bruno. In terms of the proposed uses within the site, as I mentioned, it's being projected as some type of industrial complex. As the South City staff report notes, this is a speculative project, so there's no tenants lined up, and there's no exact uses lined up. In the beginning of this project, when it was first bought by Centrum, I believe it was going to be more of a distribution center. Centrum Logistics Center was the name of the project. However, due to the changing economy, I believe it's evolved more into an industrial center or a manufacturing center. Although there has been no tenants lined up, the applicant, Centrum has mentioned companies like Tesla Motor Company, Bloom Energy, green tech companies would be there. And what they would basically do is put together and assemble parts within their, before they're shipped off into their final destination. So obviously, when you go from more of a distribution center to more of an industrial complex, it becomes more of an intense use, more larger trucks associated with it, and potentially more impacts associated in comparison to more of a distribution center, which is a lower-impact use. Regarding the process itself, as the City Manager mentioned, this is a South San Francisco project, so they have to go through several South San Francisco entitlements. They've already been to the Architectural Review Committee in South City. There's been two Planning Commission meetings that were study sessions, one of which San Bruno attended, and we spoke at to address some of our concerns. They must obtain, among other permits, they must obtain a use permit, as well as a parcel map to combine the two parcels, which I mentioned. And most importantly, the South San Francisco Planning Commission must approve an environmental impact report. The environmental impact report, which was, the council is aware of, and has been distributed to San Bruno a little, about fifty-five days ago, addresses many significant, many impacts, but several significant impacts that are not, do not have mitigation measures proposed within the EIR itself, which is somewhat unusual. Most EIRs, there is usually some period before the EIR is released, that there is some attempt to address mitigation measures, so they are incorporated into the final environmental impact document. To give some of the context of my concerns, I'd like to remind the council of some of the plans that we have going on, as well as some of the things that have been approved in San Bruno over the past several years. The first is the grade separation project. The grade separation and the train station is located about a third of a mile away from this project site, so it's in close proximity to the site. As you know, this grade separation was scheduled to start originally earlier. It got postponed to about 2012. However, the date has now shifted back up, and it looks like something that it'll be closer within San Bruno's future. And obviously, that will, a big change to the area, bringing a train station right to the center of our TOD area, which leads me to the next point, which is our general plan. Probably the largest land-use change, and the largest vision statement that the San Bruno City Council made in adopting the general plan, was changing the single-story commercial area into a mixed-use transit-oriented development area. And it's similar to what many cities are doing within San Mateo County, as well as around, in California, is looking to increase the uses, which will increase transit use. And it's a great area, because we have our train station moving right there. And some of the ideas within the general plan, this is actually our main pedestrian emphasis zone. So it's saying, we'd like to improve the area for pedestrians as we bring in these mixed-use developments, as well as improve pedestrian access for existing residential neighborhoods in the area, and make this an attractive area for future developments as the train station moves in. And to further implement that, of course, we're going through a transit corridor plan right now, to get down to the specifics of how we're going to implement that vision, and how we're going to better this area. And finally, and probably most importantly, from a current-day standpoint, is the existing residential neighborhoods. How will these existing residential neighborhoods in San Bruno be impacted by this project? Will their quality of life degrade because of this project? Did the EIR analyze that enough, and what will the final result be? So those are all the different ideas and contexts that we had, as we provided comments to the city of South San Francisco, and as we expressed our concerns to Centrum as they're developing this project. Our first major concern is that there was a rather vague project description, which kind of goes hand-in-hand when it's a speculative development. Without actually knowing what the exact uses are there, we don't, it's hard to really tell about what the exact impacts will be. However, we had to estimate those impacts based on the EIR that was in front of us. And obviously, the biggest impact is overall traffic. The traffic report, as shown by Centrum, will increase traffic by about thirty-five-hundred passenger trips, passenger cars, so regular car vehicle trips per day, as well as three-hundred-and-fifty truck trips per day. And one of the primary access points will be from San Bruno Avenue to San Mateo Avenue, to the site. And obviously, anyone who's been on San Bruno Avenue now, you have many families that live both on the north and south side of San Bruno Avenue, and it's a difficult situation to cross there right now. So when we looked at this, we had to say, will this project make a difficult situation even more, make it go into a dangerous situation? So those are things that we had to look at, and what type improvements have to be made in conjunction with this project to protect our residents within these areas. The second impact related to truck traffic, of course, is noise. When you have an industrial complex, you don't always have the typical eight-to-five routes for the truck traffic. Will these be night trips? What type of noise impacts will these have on our existing residents? And what will this do to the potential impact of development in this area, as developers look at this and say whether or not it's an attractive area to develop in? Vehicle traffic. We also had not as much a concern, obviously, as the truck traffic, but we still did have a concern to the extent that these thirty-five-hundred car trips, that don't all go through San Bruno Avenue, but a significant portion do, how will these car trips and the increased traffic affect pedestrian, affect pedestrians' usage of the area, and affect pedestrian safety in the area? Every city now, over the past ten, fifteen years, especially within the last five years, has really looked at, how can we decrease auto dependency? And South San Francisco, as well as the city of San Bruno, both have something called a transportation demand management programs, that have to be implemented along with any project. And South City says you have to aim to get this down to reduce your auto trips by thirty percent. And you have to do this by people either biking to work, or taking transit to work. Now, in this case, they're actually rather fortunate in their site location, because the site location is both a third of a mile to the BART station, as well as a third of a mile to the future Caltrain station. So when we were looking at this, and as the City Manager will go over in our proposal, we said, how can we best guarantee that these TDM measures will be met? How can we best guarantee that people who go to that site and work on that site on a daily basis are actually going to take transit, given the close proximity? Typically, what cities do is, you know, you have to make an attractive walkway to get there, you have to make people want to walk there, because when given the choice, and if it's not an easy situation, people are going to take their cars there, which is going to make, compound the traffic issues even beyond what this traffic report says. And one final thing, and one of the significant impacts that's also in there is air quality. It exceeds air quality levels. The EIR says that it's going to significant unavoidable impact, and obviously, this has a lot to do with the truck traffic that has to go in, as well as the vehicle traffic. But even from a day-to-day basis, having that many trucks go through the middle of a residential neighborhood, and the middle of our new TOD area, where future development will be there within the next ten, twenty years, how will that impact the air quality? So that kind of goes over our project concerns. In terms of the process concerns, it has been a little bit discouraging in that we didn't, although we are involved in the notice of determination, and we sent a letter to South City saying, hey, we want to be involved in the initial traffic reports, we didn't actually get the EIR, get any of the official traffic reports until the day the EIR was released. So we've had to run two parallel tracks, where we've had to look at this EIR, and what the potential impacts are to San Bruno, and make sure that our residents are protected, while at the same time having to, trying to negotiate, trying to see how to make this development better. I guess one thing that's also was a little bit disappointing is that this project sits in isolation in terms of, the site itself is the only thing that's in San Bruno, in South San Francisco, as I mentioned before. We provide the water. We provide, there's an abandoned sewer line that they're proposing to connect to, and we provide the roadway access. And there wasn't much upfront negotiation, or upfront questions about that, about, hey, can we provide the water service? Can we provide the sewer service? Can our roadway network handle this project? There's also, you know, we've requested an overall timeline. Unfortunately, as the developer will probably notice, they're up against this, the project has been expedited, from our standpoint, and we've requested extensions so that we could better analyze this, and we could better negotiate this. However, there's an August 6 deadline for this project approval, so our back has been against a wall in a certain sense, that we haven't had much time. I mean, this has probably taken up more of half my time on a day-to-day basis over the last month or so, of trying to work through this. So from a timing standpoint, it's been difficult. And in conclusion, you know, as a planner, the thing that I would really like to see with this project is, A, you know, we're creating a TOD area, and number two, we have an existing residential neighborhood. How can we get this, obviously, truck traffic is not compatible with that. We can't have traffic in terms of trucks greater than forty-five feet, or less than forty-five feet, going through this area, as it will impact the quality of life for our existing residential area, as well as the potential for future development to come in. Also, in terms of the pedestrians and the thirty-five-hundred regular passenger trips, as a planner, you know, planners want to make sure that not only are cars safe driving through this area, but bicycles are safe, and pedestrians are safe. And I think that's what the council laid out, by creating this pedestrian emphasis zone within, around the train station. So I'd look for those two general themes to go along with this project being approved. So that's my general outline of the project and concerns, and I could take any questions, if you have any.
Any questions from the council this time?
Through the chair, and just Mayor Ruiain. Quickly, you mentioned all of these thousands of trips every day. Is there parking on-site? I understand that trucks would probably go in, load up, and in and out all the time, but what about the individuals that actually work there? Is that on-site parking?
Yes, it seems like they do have enough, they do have enough parking. I think they have five-hundred-and-thirty-odd parking spaces there. So the parking for, as long as, I would say, I would preface it with this, there is enough parking on-site, as long as those transportation demand management goals are met. Because by those transportation demand management goals are met, you know, there's going to be less parking required. So yes, there is enough parking on-site, as long as we get people to take transit. Thank you.
Other questions from council at this time? Okay, I know there's folks here from Centrum, that, did you wish to address the City Council?
Actually, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Would it be the council's pleasure for staff's presentation to continue for a moment with some of the proposals that we've come up with?
Great. I thought you had concluded your presentation. Sorry. You know, let's hear from staff, and then we can hear from applicants.
Through the chair. I was wondering, while we're listening, is there a graphic so we can see the, see this site?
It's not the site plan.
Okay.
We have that.
Or even a blow-up of a map, just to give everyone...
Do you have a slide you can just forward it to now, so they could have that in the Just basically the site plan. Probably leave it on.
Let's see the relationship with 101.
Sure. It's the largest building that you see in the middle of the slide, that's the GSA, the Government Services Building, that was previously, was the Post Office, and is subject to this application. Just south of it, to the bottom of the screen, is the Sky Park, and then you see 380 going through there, and to the west, you see Tanfran.
And that's 101, 101 to the right.
Correct.
The street frontage, which is a little bit difficult to see in this overhead picture, is the frontage of the property directly faces onto San Mateo Avenue, just to the north of the Sky Park facility. Hard to see the street, but it's there.
It's a narrow street.
It is. I will proceed with some comments about the results of the work that your staff has completed in the last several weeks regarding a proposed approach to dealing with the numbers of issues that the Community Development Director's presentation has outlined. First, I'd like to say that the applicant has identified, in our presentation as yet this evening, has not identified that there is a significant economic benefit to the project, contributed by the project to the region, and more specifically, potentially to the communities of South San Francisco and San Bruno. In particular, the applicant has suggested that there is the opportunity and the probability that individuals who work and who frequent or have business transactions at the project, once it is built out, will be in proximity to San Bruno, and particularly to San Bruno's downtown, and may have an interest in shopping and/or dining locally. We recognize that there is the potential for both economic benefit directly to our local communities, but more specifically, that the transition and the redevelopment of what is essentially a large vacant property has some opportunity for regional benefit. Our comments tonight are not intended to ignore that, but simply to identify that that economic benefit should not be taken as the sole means by which the project is evaluated and considered in its regional context. And specifically, that the city of San Bruno is likely to experience a number of important and difficult impacts, which we believe have the opportunity to be satisfactorily resolved. And it's my intent tonight to outline very briefly a proposed set of strategies that would, in your staff's opinion, be available to address at least most of the items that the Community Development Director has outlined. I'd just make an additional comment at the outset, and that is that we have worked closely and cooperatively over this last relatively short period of time with Centrum, since the EIR was issued in June. Centrum has made some good progress in the direction of a collaborative solution to some of the issues, and our proposal that I will outline for you now really builds on information that we discussed early on with Centrum, and some ideas that Centrum themselves put forward in terms of how the project might be changed and managed in a manner that addresses particularly traffic issues. There are a number of uncertainties regarding the project, and that's to be expected, as Community Development Director outlined in a project of this nature, where these precise tenant uses and identities are unknown at this point. And one of the things that is particularly unknown at this point is, what is the exact number of trucks that will be coming and going from the site? And because the project originally intended that those trucks and the vehicle, the passenger vehicles associated with the project would make their way to and from the site via San Bruno Avenue and San Mateo Avenue in the city of San Bruno, it's very difficult to really quantify precisely what that impact is. The environmental document seeks to do that, but one of the continuing issues that we have been wrestling with is how much of the truck traffic is, what types of trucks are those, and how will they impact roadways and residents in San Bruno? One of the first things that we looked at, and let me just outline in very broad scale, our proposal seeks to address particularly the traffic impacts, and it has three interrelated components that are deliberately intended to work together as a consolidated package, if you will, to address the overall impacts of the project in San Bruno. Those three components are physical improvements to the Centrum interface at San Mateo Avenue at the frontage of the property, compensation to San Bruno for specific impacts that cannot be physically addressed or eliminated, and lastly, strengthening of a transportation demand management, or TDM, program to aggressively work towards and achieve a vehicle trip reduction to the overall project over the life of the project, over an extended period of time. So first, as to the physical improvements, Centrum, at an early stage in our conversations, identified that they heard and understood the issue about truck traffic in San Bruno, and proposed a revision to the driveway configuration on the property's site, such that trucks larger, at the size of forty-five feet and larger, could be restricted from either turning left on San Mateo Avenue and coming, exiting the site into San Bruno, and similarly, could be restricted from using San Mateo Avenue to access the site and make a right-hand turn into the project's site. That solution essentially involves a constriction of the turning radius on the driveway. The diagram in front of you on the screen shows, in very conceptual terms, a driveway that would, it's one driveway with a median, that centerpiece is actually a median in what is a single driveway, such that the inbound traffic would use the lane on the right, and the outbound traffic would use the lane on the left. And by configuration of that median, and as I indicated, restricting the turning radius, trucks of a certain size, forty-five feet and larger, could be essentially funneled into a direction that, only one way out, which would be northbound, and thereby avoiding San Bruno altogether. Similarly, on the inbound portion of the driveway, that driveway could be configured so that trucks, again, of that large size, could be restricted from being able to enter the site from San Bruno. Wouldn't take long before a driver would figure that out, and manage the routing of that vehicle to accommodate the driveway. Our proposal builds on this basic configuration with a further restriction of the turning radius, such that trucks of all sizes, not just the very large trucks, and again, we don't know, and I'm sure Centrum doesn't know at this moment, how many of the three-hundred-and-forty-five daily truck trips are anticipated into the site? How many of those are really very large trucks, and how many of them are somewhat smaller trucks? Again, this is a conceptual sketch that shows a further constriction of that driveway entry and exit, such that trucks of all sizes would be restricted to entering and exiting the site from the north. The car traffic is another issue that has been a substantial discussion topic, and among the things that your staff has had to look at and carefully consider is the fact that San Mateo Avenue in front of the property is actually a San Bruno city street. The properties directly across the street, and directly adjacent to the south, are San Bruno businesses. They are physically within the geographic limits of the city of San Bruno. And a more... Bruno, and a more draconian, if you will, constriction to the way that traffic flows in that San Mateo Avenue vicinity is likely not only to produce the result of traffic being constrained in terms of how it can access the Centrum site, it could actually have a detrimental effect on adjacent properties in San Bruno, and potentially on the traffic and circulation pattern in the San Mateo Avenue corridor as a whole, which is obviously not desirable. In order to accommodate the volume of traffic that is anticipated as documented in the EIR, we are proposing the establishment of a center turn lane where vehicles, both cars and trucks, could stack or and/or seek refuge so as they are awaiting the opportunity to turn into or out of the site, in order that free flow of traffic in both directions on either side of the turn lane would be maintained in a safe and legitimate operational Car traffic is not restricted as to how it accesses or exits the Centrum site. The car traffic would continue, or passenger vehicle traffic would continue to access the site in a free manner, although it would be encouraged by the driveway configuration coming in and out of the Centrum site also to access the property and to exit from the north, or to the north. Again, the turning radius is deliberately identified and designed in this conceptual proposal in a manner that would only restrict trucks, but would continue to maintain a relatively workable and free access to the site, as well as to properties across the street in San Bruno. There are other ways to address traffic, both truck traffic and vehicle traffic, but again, our consideration has been for something that is really reasonable and that is focused deliberately and specifically on the legitimate impacts, as opposed to attempting to somehow make the site unworkable. Second area of our coordinated or comprehensive strategy involves compensation to the city of San Bruno for improvements, pedestrian improvements to San Bruno Avenue that would, again, facilitate safe movements in that important area of our city, considering the additional fairly large volume of vehicle trips that would continue to be expected to use the San Bruno Avenue corridor, and for the long-term maintenance of our streets and roadways that would be significantly impacted by the large volume of traffic that is expected to result from the Centrum project. Thirdly, our proposal includes a component for strengthening the transportation demand management program that is expected to be developed as part of the project and is required, as Community Development Director indicated by the South San Francisco's, by South San Francisco's municipal code. That TDM program has not yet been fully or finally developed, and it is not immediately certain to us exactly how that program would be effectively monitored and what type of reporting requirements would validate and document the achievement of at least the 15% trip reduction objective that that program envisions. We are proposing that some specific monitoring requirements would be included as part of the TDM requirement for the project, as well as a reporting component that would include the opportunity of the city of San Bruno to receive information, to be a partner with South San Francisco in the long-term oversight and management of the achievement of those TDM results. We feel that that's a desirable result, or an important result, of this project consideration process, in that, as I mentioned before, traffic will, in large volumes, will use San Bruno City Streets, and the frontage of the property is entirely within the jurisdiction of the city of San Bruno. We're also proposing that, as part of that TDM requirement, that some additional pedestrian improvements be required, and that would include pedestrian access in a secure and usable manner to connect the site to public transit, both at the San Bruno Bard Station, as well as at the future Caltrain Station at San Bruno and San Mateo Avenues, both of those locations. Fortunately, this project site is well-located to take advantage of public transit. That area is not, I would say, particularly pedestrian-friendly at the current time, but there is a tremendous opportunity to take advantage of the transit opportunities and really more fully articulate what, how to achieve the TDM objectives of at least 15% reduction in vehicle traffic. Again, my purpose tonight is really to summarize the concept of the program that we have developed in order to address the various concerns, and particularly those related to traffic, that present themselves for the city of San Bruno, and we have had a brief opportunity to discuss these components with the representatives from Centrum in a meeting just today. I wouldn't expect that they would be specifically prepared to provide you with an answer, yes, we will do this tonight, but this is certainly something that we look forward to working over the next period of time directly and deliberately with Centrum, to see if we can't find a way to make sure that these issues are fully addressed, in building again on the concepts that they originally presented to us. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions from council? Any other information from staff?
That's it.
Okay, let's move on to South San Francisco's applicant, Centrum.
This is a much longer presentation, we're trying to abbreviate for you.
No, that's fine.
If you could just lift that, there you go.
Good evening, council members, my name is Michael McLean.
If you could just lift that, there you go.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor, my name is Michael McLean. I'm with Centrum Properties, the lead developer on this project. Thank you for your time this evening, good evening Connie and staff, thanks again for seeing us today. We are looking forward to continuing these conversations with your staff. It has been almost two months now that we've gotten to know each other, and I look forward to continuing, hopefully beyond this project, and a further relationship. But the topic at hand is the SFO Logistics Center, as it's currently named. As was indicated, that is probably a misnomer and does need to be renamed. The property does consist of a 575,000-square-foot existing warehouse and distribution center that was owned by the General Services Administration. The postal service was a main tenant, they still occupy about 30,000 square feet, and annually, they occupy about 200,000 square feet for a 24-hour-a-day operation during the five months over the winter. That is primarily for holiday mail. The DEA is also a storage tenant, along with the GSA and some other government uses. It is primarily vacant for the rest of the time without the expansion of the postal service. It was occupied fully by the government and utilized again as warehouse and distribution. Our plan is to renovate, bring up the code, add some more modern amenities to the project. The property has very few loading docks and makes it really a feeble property for any use in this market. We also, so we plan to put in some loading docks, not the type of loading docks that would make it conducive to a true distribution center like on Proteus Avenue or others that you'll see in the local market, but simply to allow for unloading and offloading of goods, primarily business-related goods. The master use permit requests a 40% limit on warehouse and distribution, which will be locked in and limited, as I'm sure you're familiar with the use permit process here. It also locks in a general industrial use at 60% of the space. That will include the five 10,000-square-foot or so buildings. Those new buildings are meant to entice new companies, smaller startups, and more of a higher-tech type of employment. The current general plan in South San Francisco is for mixed industrial in that area, and all adjacent property owners are mixed industrial users, they're all compatible and nearly identical to this property. It's my understanding that your general code as well calls for light industrial users, and every adjacent property owner of this property and up and down San Mateo Avenue is also an industrial user. So when we saw this site and we addressed it primarily, we felt that our plans were in conjunction with what it's been used for, what the surrounding uses are currently being used for, and what we could see was the future uses on and around the site. Since we've gotten into more detailed discussions with your staff at San Bruno, we've learned of an intent to study the corridor as more of a pedestrian-oriented environment, to remove the industrial businesses and replace that with more of a mixed-use retail and residential environment, and we have taken that to heart. We have spent a significant amount of time and resources in evaluating what we can do to help those concerns. We did learn this evening after our meeting that, we talked to South San Francisco, the site plan will be presented with the changes in the entrance. Okay, Steve, do you have some copies that you could pass out?
Apologies, we didn't come prepared with a slide of the entrance changes, but they are similar to what Connie had described, is that with concrete medians and curb lines, we would limit any truck traffic from going to or from the site through San Bruno streets. It was never our intentional intent to direct trucks specifically through San Bruno. The traffic study and the traffic plan was just simply to utilize the streets that we were on, as they naturally would be. As soon as it came to our attention that there was a problem with the San Bruno-San Mateo intersection, we did try and take steps to alleviate that. Just to quickly reiterate, the design is to prevent trucks 45 feet and over, which are the trucks that can legally and functionally make, not make the turn at San Bruno Avenue onto San Mateo. So the trucks under that size are similar to Sky Park, similar to tow trucks and the other uses on that roadway. The trucks that are now physically enabled to access the site will be directed north and from the north, so they will not be able to make a right-hand turn into the site, and they will not be able to make a left-hand turn out of the site, as Connie explained. So that will be presented tomorrow at the planning commission hearing as part of our requested approval on our site plan, and be locked into the proposal. There was, you know, for some reason, the staff report didn't exactly include that, I don't know why, I just found out about that today, so we were able to resolve that this afternoon. The project, in more general terms, is intended to commit a significant amount of improvements and resources into the local economy. We recognize that this is on the border of San Mateo and San Bruno. We recognize that there has been insufficient private investment in this corridor for some time, primarily due to possibly the nature of the businesses, the government tenant being there simply didn't allow for private investment in this large of a site. And we thought we had the opportunity to really work in that community and work to improve the area. What you see up on the screen is a rendering of the architecture of the only building with street frontage on the entire property. It is a 9,000-square-foot building, designed to both give credit to and advance the classic industrial type of architecture in the area with some barrel roofs and things like that, but it will house primarily service-oriented businesses and a small cafe-type restaurant to help service primarily the employees of our site and directly around the site. Significant improvements will be made with parkscape, streetscape, sidewalks, and architecture improvements on that with storefronts and rear parking to help enhance the immediate roadway within our perimeter. It is absolutely in our best interest that our property, as well as adjacent properties, begin to work together to enhance the overall environment, both pedestrian-oriented and architecturally and facade-wise. The remaining buildings are all located behind existing users, both in San Bruno and South San Francisco. If you can see the four buildings to the bottom of that picture, those are the four smaller buildings that we have proposed in addition to the fifth one on the road frontage. Again, the large building makes up about 10 bays, ranging between 20,000 square feet and 80,000 square feet. There are some loading docks proposed in the drive aisle immediately in front of the property, that is to provide an insurance of off-street parking and off-street loading. We are overparked by, I think, we have 150% of the required parking spaces, or more. We were actually requested to decrease the number of parking spaces by South San Francisco in order to increase some of our open space and green and park requirements to exceed the green space requirements of the city. So we also have onsite storage of trailers and significant, excuse me, I'm losing the word here, queuing for the trucks onsite. If you can see, there is a tremendous amount of space between the entrance and the interior truck courts, so that we can make sure the trucks can get on and off the site in a very safe and controlled manner. With the new entrance, that will be even more controlled, so that we will, the direction will be very specific, and the signage will be clear, so that those trucks can avoid the San Bruno traffic and concerns of staff. The project is geared to target what we would like to say, a new generation of employers, given the types of employees in the area, in both South San Francisco and San Bruno, we think this is a great opportunity to provide an estimated 750 jobs from this development with new training in a new economy, specifically targeting green energy or green technology-type companies. This is not heavy manufacturing, primarily this is more of like an assembled situation, as well as some classic warehouse and distribution to provide a true range of employment options and ability to employ a range of trained and less-trained employees on the site. The smaller buildings, again, are intended to try and attract a smaller R&amp;D or higher technology-type space to, again, try and work to the betterment of the project and the overall economy. We have a budget of an additional $23 million that is already approved by our bank. That is the, we've already invested $56 million into the properties, primarily primarily in acquisitions. The twenty-three million will go directly into site improvements and the new construction, as well as to attract quality tenants into the space. The interior of the buildings will need significant upgrades in order to attract really any tenants, but primarily the higher-quality tenants. That money is at risk. We are up for approval tomorrow. If we do not get it, it is likely that money is not funded. If that money is not funded, then none of these improvements or this vision will be able to go forward in any capacity. So that is why there is a pressing matter. Your staff and Connie have been working with us diligently for the last almost two months to try and come to a resolution, and, you know, we do have some conceptual ideas that try and address your concerns, particularly as far as traffic goes. But we are not there yet as far as a final solution. We are, as I said, instituting the change on the entrance, but we have work yet to do on the remaining issues. As far as the EIR goes, I hope, if you have had a chance to read the initial EIR, that you have also had a chance to read the response to comments. It is a significant amount of reading. I have tried to get through it a number of times, and I've got to do it in piecemeal. But there are, in particular, there is one traffic issue that is identified within the San Bruno streets. It is in particular that San Bruno-San Mateo intersection, and it is further specified to the ability of trucks making a right-hand turn off of San Bruno onto San Mateo Avenue. We feel that we will be able to eliminate that concern with the entrance changes, to eliminate those trucks going through that, as well as with some policy issues instructing our tenants not, simply not to use those roads for their deliveries. Other than that, there are no other non-mitigatable or even impacts that are in need of mitigation within the San Bruno jurisdiction. There is a double impact on the southbound 101 San Bruno interchange. It is the off-ramp for San Bruno 101, and the mitigation is in Caltrans jurisdiction. That is simply requested mitigation in the EIR as a restriping, allowing a straight and right-turn lane as opposed to just a straight lane currently to accommodate what was expected to be an increase in traffic in the intersection. Now, with rerouting the trucks and with the encouragement of other vehicles to the north, we feel that that is, we're certainly still willing to go forward with that mitigation and will be required to, but feel like that is as well addressed. We've also, as Connie also spoke to, done an economic impact analysis. We hired a third-party consultant who is here tonight, if you had questions on that. With a significant number of employees on the site, there is a significant opportunity for San Bruno to attract a tremendous amount of business. I won't quote specific numbers, I believe they are somewhere in the range of two to four million of total projected business from the employees. And again, our consulting can speak more specifically on the numbers. That would be up to San Bruno to capture. You are significantly the closest downtown, significantly close to service centers. Certainly, your mall is the only mall for a long while. And so the access to capture those dollars is significant, as well as the employment base being, I think, relevant to both the citizens of both cities, could provide tremendous employment in both cities. Increase of seven hundred and fifty jobs in today's economy really could be tremendous. At that, I think I will thank you for your time and open up to questions.
Michael, maybe let me just begin, and thank you for being here this evening and taking a minute to address the council. And having had an opportunity to read correspondence back and forth and text messages or emails, one might have the assumption that the city of San Bruno is totally opposed to the project. That is not our position at all. It's been a longtime underutilized site, and we believe that the utilization and property utilization can have great benefits for the city of South San Francisco and for San Bruno. I only wish we had that much federal property that was going to be going onto the tax rolls once a private party purchased it. Unfortunately, we're just one property line too far south. The real concern that the city has had is the traffic impacts, okay? And I can appreciate what you've done with the trucks, but that's still, a forty-four-foot truck is still a big truck coming down a very inadequate street to service an almost six hundred-square-foot warehouse. Is there any potential that we can tighten that, where you keep it to maybe thirty-foot trucks? That's more comparable to the size of our own senior center van here or Sky Park's van, which wouldn't have the impacts in the community that so concern us. That's my first question. My other question, I know you met with staff and you just received or kind of had these plans dumped on you somewhere between Chicago and here, and I appreciate that. But maybe talk to me about the transportation demand management plan and how you could envision that working and how we can get to something that works for you, for South San Francisco and for San Bruno.
To the first question, we are continuing to evaluate the radius of the entrance. There is a significant concern as to safety. At a certain level, if you decrease the access to a, say, thirty-five-foot vehicle, you've also eliminated the access to a larger vehicle. So the problem will then be the maneuvering in and out of the site. For anything larger than that vehicle will be extremely difficult, if not dangerous, as well as creating an angle facing north that will probably eliminate even passenger cars making a safe turn out of the site to go back home to San Bruno, go shopping or lunch to San Bruno. So we are absolutely looking at that. We, two weeks ago, your staff hired a traffic consultant specifically to look at that entrance and other concerns. We gladly reimburse the city for that expense, and will continue to do so as we go through this process. We're open to it, but it's got to be safe. It's got to be legal, it's got to be approvable, it's got to be engineered, and that is more of an effort than we have. The entrance that we have engineered does specifically limit the trucks that are legally allowed on that road, but have problems on the road. It does not specifically limit the trucks that are already on that road and access that road without traffic impacts. And that's where we started, that's why it was designed in that capacity in the first place. As far as the TDM goes, there is a requirement that a TDM is put in place. It is mandatory. The TDM contemplates a thirty percent reduction in trip traffic due to its implementation. It is not an optional thing to do. The EIR states a predicted fifteen percent in traffic reduction as a way to be conservative, that we don't underestimate a traffic impact. So while the TDM is meant to curb thirty percent of the trips, it actually is only accounted for fifteen percent so that there is accounting for slippage and making sure that it's not, it's not under-reported what the traffic might be. So we are dedicated to improving the TDM, to ensuring, to make sure that we reach that thirty percent mark. There are other facilities in South San Francisco that have reached or exceeded the thirty percent mark, including Zinentec. And we're looking at some of their models and the way they promote it within their employment base, within their tenants, in order to do that. So the TDM is specifically spelled out in the EIR as an amendment to the EIR, to the traffic impact analysis. And, you know, we fully intend to abide by it and look to accentuate it. We have discussed different ways of doing that, and we continue to be open to discussing the different methods of making sure that happens.
Any questions from council of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much for being here.
All right, thank you very much.
Before we move on to any members of the public here, I just had a question for staff. You were talking about a center-turn lane on San Mateo Avenue. Do you have enough space there?
Actually, that center-turn lane is envisioned as a ten-foot width, and it would require a small additional right-of-way from the, that we would propose would come from the frontage of the Centrum property in the area of two to three feet. That would preserve, as I understand, and I'm looking to the Public Services Director to concur, that would preserve both the two-through lanes as well as the on-street parking, which we understand to be very important to the existing businesses in that neighborhood. That is correct.
So you'd be looking at a two-to-three-foot, just in that frontage?
Just along the frontage of the Centrum property.
Just to address that, again, I read it on the plane. So we have not had even a chance to really sit down and look at that option. We're going to, well, our traffic consultant is here, and he's going to continue to look at it, and we'll continue to discuss it tomorrow. But we have not even had a chance to actually study that yet. I would also like to reiterate that our economic consultant is here. If you had any questions for her on anything that might impact San Bruno.
Any questions from council? And certainly, if you want to make any presentation to us, you don't need to just hear our questions. We're here, we understand you're here, we know somebody's paying you to be here. So share the information. You didn't just come because you want to see me, so if you have something to say, now's the time.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Joanne Brien, and I have an urban economics consulting firm, Brien &amp; Associates. I was asked to, about three weeks ago, prepare an economic analysis of the project, both for South San Francisco but also for the city of San Bruno. So I will just focus my presentation on the particulars that relate to San Bruno and not, as you mentioned, South San Francisco. In general, the project has expected, like Mike noted, we're estimating a total of a thousand jobs, and about seven hundred and forty or fifty of those jobs would be net new jobs for the area. And those jobs are expected to be new jobs for residents in the general area. There will also be additional one hundred and forty-eight construction jobs associated with the project, and those would primarily also be local jobs. And as you know, the construction industry in California has been really hard-hit, so new construction jobs are, I'm sure, really welcomed. What we also looked at was the fact that because of the proximity of the site to San Bruno and downtown San Bruno, it's more likely that the new employees will frequent San Bruno businesses than they would downtown San Francisco. So we estimated the new spending, the total spending for the project would be about four million dollars a year in what we call taxable sales. These would, this revenue would be spent fairly locally, and because there is some existing uses and activity in the site, we were conservative and assumed that three million would be net new spending. In order to estimate what would go to San Bruno, we assumed seventy-five percent of that would be captured by San Bruno businesses, and the other twenty-five percent will be captured in South San Francisco. And these are rough approximations, you know, it could vary. But the site has a small amount of retail onsite, so that employee spending would benefit South San Francisco because it's on there, it's in the city, right? So that's the ratio. We assumed, there's methods to estimating employee spending, and we use fifty percent of the typical assumption for employee spending to be conservative. So there is the chance that those figures could be higher. So typically, employees spend on average like seventeen dollars a day, two hundred and forty workdays a year, you know, typical two-week vacation. And that includes not just lunch and coffee and that kind of thing, but it's like, you know, you go out and buy gifts at lunchtime, or you go out to dinner after work, or you go out and buy new clothing or whatever it is, you know, sometimes during the week. So that's an average, there's a national organization that tracks these kind of spendings. So it could be higher than seventeen a day, but we've sort of been conservative. So that would generate about, assuming seventy-five percent of that occurs in San Bruno, about twenty-two thousand dollars, direct dollars to South San Francisco. I would point out that those new dollars then also generate additional activity in terms of it supports new employees in those retail and service businesses. And so there's a little bit of what we call a multiplier effect, and so there would be an additional three million dollars of additional spending that would occur in the broader regional economy from that direct three million dollars of new spending. So do you understand about that multiplier effect? You know, if you spend one dollar, it creates salaries for employees. They go out and spend that money then on food and clothing, so. So in general, the other things that we would point out is that the county of San Mateo would receive an additional two hundred and seventy-six thousand in property tax revenues that would benefit residents of the county. And the counties are in quite dire fiscal straits right now. So because the site has been used by federal agencies, it hasn't been generating any property tax revenues, so that's also additional impact.
To the chair. And again, I certainly don't have the expertise you do, but the average rate, which you formulated of seventeen dollars a day, just to me seems high. I'm just trying to analyze, you know, I'm just trying to think the coffee or the lunch or what have you. And where I come from, I'm not sure about anywhere else. That's a high, to me, that's very high, that's not realistic. I mean, you have your facts to back you up, I'm just a simple guy who lives here in San Bruno.
Because mostly people think about what you spend in the average day, but employees do go out and do other shopping, like they decide to go out and buy their groceries for the week. So it's not just like the typical, like, I'm buying my lunch or my newspaper or my coffee. There's other expenditures that happen by employees. So when you average those expenditures over the year, that's how it gets done. But again, because the actual rate is twice that, the actual reported rate, and we felt that was too high, so we reduced it to fifty percent, just to be conservative, just because we figured you would have that kind of reaction, but.
Thank you.
That's the approach. Any other questions?
Other questions, council?
No, okay, thank you so much.
I know there's a traffic personality here. Did they wish to speak or have anything they wanted to share on behalf of Centrum?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, you know I don't come here very often. My name is Bob Marshall. I was sitting up there for twelve years, a long time ago. And I've just had a little history on this. I've learned more tonight than I knew before I came in the room. You know, you've got a great project in front of you. Something's going to, I can see from staff, they're trying to work with it, they're trying to put this thing together. I didn't want to come here and speak because you're going to say George Corey sent me here. No, George Corey did not send me here. I'm here as a businessperson, a realtor in the area for fifty years. I have no connection with this company whatsoever. I just listened to the people talk a couple of minutes ago, and we've got a great opportunity. You know what, I think one thing that has happened here that I've seen over the years is South City did not call us. South City didn't tell us until the last minute. South City didn't care about us, and I'm talking pretty broad on that. But I went through that experience years ago with them, over the Tam Fran Shopping Center and so forth, and mucking into the names or anything. But you know what, there was just no respect, cities have to work together. And that's really, I see that happening from what I've heard tonight, that you are working. I'm only here to say, I think you've got a great thing in front of us, even though it's not all in our city. But do something with it, and I know you will. For me to be here tonight, to come down, I'm going to go home right now unless I have to listen to George talk. I have to listen to George talk, no.
So that's why you jumped ahead of the traffic personality?
Yeah, but he gets paid and I don't, okay?
I know, you're here for free.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Bob Trumong.
I should just add that with regard to the, can you hear me?
Yeah.
With regard to the TDM measures, they're primarily geared around taking advantage of access to the BART station and the Caltrain station, so measures such as some parking policies are being considered that potentially would separate out the cost of parking from rents, transit subsidies, there's been talk of working with the city on pedestrian improvements and also looking at measures such as bike parking and so forth. So, you know, just given the location and the proximity to transit, a transit mode share of maybe 8% or so would be expected even without additional measures. So, in terms of what needs to be done to get to that 30%, it's really geared around taking advantage of the location. And then I guess the only other thing I'll add is, when numbers of trips are discussed and it's 3,000, 3,500 trips or so forth, just keep in mind that about half of the traffic's going to the north and half to the south, so in terms of how many trips are coming into San Bruno at the San Bruno-San Mateo intersection, winds it being, you know, a little over half and then it quickly disperses in three different directions, so it's not quite the volume in any particular location except for immediately adjacent to the driveways essentially.
Now, before you leave, the applicant mentioned that there's a requirement from South San Francisco that a transportation demand management plan be created. How does that work when you're, in essence, just the land that the project is on is within South San Francisco and everything else is in a different jurisdiction? Does South San Francisco put a requirement that, that work with the San Bruno transportation mode? Maybe explain that a little bit, how that would work to me.
Well, it's not specifically stipulated, but there would be some flexibility to, you know, undertake some sort of agreement to enhance their TDM measures. But one, one point to note is that the TDM requirement is that the project provide the capacity for 30% trip reduction and so by undertaking these measures and making it possible for 30% of trips to take advantage of, you know, transit subsidies and so forth, you know, that's how they fulfill the requirement.
Okay, any other questions?
To the chair, just so I understand, if the TDM is not just South City's deal, it's a regional deal, I mean, talking about cities together working or how does that?
Well, there's, the city of South San Francisco has a very stringent requirement and there's also regional CCAC TDM requirements, so combined into a single TDM plan, I think for purposes of identifying the most stringent measures, I'd focus on the South San Francisco items that's really aiming at that 30% TDM reduction.
Any other questions? Okay, I know there's a number of members of the public here that perhaps want to just hear or want to speak on this issue. Now's the time to let us hear what your thoughts are.
Robert, excuse me, Robert Ream, 7th Avenue. I have a couple of questions. I believe the presentation said that San Mateo Avenue currently is not a designated truck route. In the overall scheme, the city would have to designate that as a truck route and what ramifications does that have or does that bring additional restrictions or requirements? I don't need an answer right now, but at some point maybe. I'm not comfortable with the TDM. I did read the staff report and I got through part of the final EIR online, but I agree with, what I think the council's position is that we need, we San Bruno need the ability to stay in the loop and know that they are effectively getting close to whether it's the 15% or the 30% and if they're not, that there are requirements that they have to adjust or whatever. They just don't say, "Well, we only got 10% and that's all we can do, we wanted to get 15 and we wanted to get 30." That's not a good enough answer. My final question is if the trucks are going to basically come in from the north on San Mateo Avenue and exit to the north on San Mateo Avenue, part of San Mateo Avenue is San Bruno city streets, who's going to pay for the, I'm going to say excessive additional wear and tear on just the streets? I think that, that needs to be covered. You also talked about sewer and water, I don't know what the usages might do to the city's ability to supply water and take away sewage. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the counsel on this? Maybe if we could just ask staff to address the issue of truck routes and does that need to be designated a truck route? And I know it's not currently a state truck route, but.
It's currently not a truck route and that's in our code, so it would need to be addressed in some manner.
Okay. I know a 75-foot truck, there aren't many currently that use San Mateo Avenue as a 75-foot truck. There's a lot of 35- and 40-foot trucks, I mean, what, talk to me about truck routes. I mean, if you have trucks over 62 feet, you have to designate it or have we just turned our head and not designated a truck route? I mean, there's a lot of streets that have trucks that use them.
There's probably some. There's probably some need to, you know, look at this issue very carefully. I understand that, you know, for example, San Bruno Avenue only allows trucks based on our code that are 16,000 pounds or less, so, you know, the trucks that this project is talking about bringing there would likely weigh significantly more and that really becomes an enforcement issue under our current code. The city council has the authority to, as was done, I think, last time in the 1980s, to evaluate what are the proper truck routes and the proper weights that those streets and neighborhoods can sustain. So you do that through a particular process, there's an ordinance and sometimes there's a, I believe there's also a hearing associated with that.
And then the question was also raised about excessive wear and tear from the project on our streets and.
One of the key strategies that's identified in the comprehensive proposal that we presented to you earlier was exactly that. It is very typical that projects that are expected, let's say the project was being presented to us, that is within our authority to approve, it would be very typical that issues such as wear and tear from the volume of truck and/or vehicle traffic using city streets that significantly exceeds the current amounts would be compensated to the local jurisdiction in some sort of an impact fee or other amount that is part of the project approval process. Again, our proposal includes compensation to the city of San Bruno in recognition of, in part, the additional volume of traffic and the long-term maintenance requirements to address that additional vehicle traffic.
And one last question was raised regarding water and sewer. My understanding is, you know, those are enterprise funds, though the property not being in our jurisdiction, we would have the alternative of not providing those services. However, given the capacity, I don't know why we wouldn't, but am I correct in that or?
Yes, you're correct. The, currently, water is provided to the site and the proposal includes water continuing to be provided by the city of San Bruno. That, you know, the costs of that are paid to the city of San Bruno in the form of usage fees, just like any other user. I think the, the issue that we may want to look at in more detail is whether that is a, an appropriate, long-term and sustainable means of addressing the water and sewer capacity needs of the project. Again, the project includes the anticipated use of a previously abandoned sewer line to provide sewer transport services to the wastewater treatment plant. Again, while that is a, something that can be done, that, you know, how, how that's done and what the long-term ramifications of that are would, would need to be addressed further.
And you're free to comment, but I need you to go back over to the podium because you're being televised.
Do I apologize, I forgot to speak a little bit about the sewer and water on the site. A couple of things have come up as we've continued the investigation over the last 18 months of the property. The first being that we recognize that there could be a potential stormwater impact. Even though we are significant, we are actually increasing the open space and decreasing the coverage on the site significantly, we felt that in order to make sure we did not add any stormwater to any San Bruno systems, we've devised a method to keep and store stormwater onsite so that we were able to make sure that those, that capacity was maintained to eliminate any capacity issues over what's existing today. The sewer is actually a live sewer, we are not the only ones connected to it, it is not abandoned. There has been some jurisdictional questions between South San Francisco and San Bruno. We have been investigating the pipes through cameras, cleaning and, we had to, basically, we had to plug the pipes, we had to drain them, we had to clean out debris and we had to put down cameras. We've done that about four times in different lengths and different areas, both in the main and the lateral as well as the connector. So we're in the process of working with that, there, our consultants in the city of South San Francisco have identified clear capacity and flow for the project, which is continuing, already flowing into the same sewer. And we are, again, working through the issue, but primarily, this is an existing sewer, it's an existing connection and, and that's where we're on the storm. The water is, is city water, I mean, it is billed and paid at the meter and it has, has continued to be, to be that way. So, I mean, that's, our hydrology consultant is not here. Steve, I don't know if you have anything to add on that? Okay, so that's my, my knowledge of that situation.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wanting to address the counsel on this before we go for an answer question, counsel? I need you just to go over to the podium.
My name is Joe Munoz. I have property in 6th Avenue here in San Bruno. I'm concerned, I'm for this business coming into San Bruno because it brings in revenue, puts people to work and everything, which I'm happy for that. But my main concern, and it seems like the big topic is the trucks, well, I was a trucker, so I know the situation. Okay, truckers, as you can see, they're, okay, a moving van is about 30, 35 feet long, but when you take a semi, it's 44 feet, 48 feet, and now it's 54 feet. So, how can they come off the freeway 101, go westbound on San Bruno Avenue and make a right turn on San Mateo? Where I've seen a lot of times, the signal lights have been knocked down right there in that corner. They cannot make the turn. As a matter of fact, they have to go on the opposite side of the lane in order for the truck to go through, stop the traffic going the opposite way. So it, that's my main concern right there. Also, I wrote a few notations. The fact is, there's a Bel Air School there, right off 3rd Avenue. And of course, schools could be in session soon and there's going to be only one signal light there on 3rd Avenue. And with all the traffic going through there, you've got 3,500 autos, you've got 300 trucks, I mean, what's that going to do to the pedestrians and the schoolkids going home from school, you know? The other thing is, you've got the train station, I don't know what's going to happen there at the train station, but here again, you're going to have more traffic. Traffic on, through the avenues are real narrow roads and I've seen many a times when trucks go through the avenues and the truck takes the whole street and they've got low lines, power lines, phone lines, cable lines, and they hit them and they knock them right out, right out of the homes. The street that he was talking about, the sewer and the water, which is fine, but in that area, they get floods. So floods is a main concern there too. How's all that water going to be piped out of there? What happens if there's a flood and you've got truckers coming in, cars, pedestrians and all that, will that be all, be able to excess out, you know? The other thing is, I know San Bruno has their own streets, which is city streets, but El Camino is a state street, okay? Now, you have truckers come down 380, either probably going, I say eastbound, take the El Camino exit, they can come down San Bruno Avenue. Now, how can they be able to make a left turn onto San Mateo Avenue? It's the same problem right there, that whole intersection right there, once they cross the tracks, it's right there. Then also, you have the pedestrian crossing the tracks, I mean, that is a big concern right there too. And with all the traffic, it's going to be very hard to distinguish this business being there because of all the traffic going through there. I'm for the business, but I can't see with all the traffic going through there, this could be very hard on the city of San Bruno. Thank you very much for this.
Thank you, we, we agree with you, okay? And we share your concerns, probably almost verbatim, okay? We think the use of the property is a good use, but we're concerned about the truck traffic especially, okay? I mean, the auto traffic is going to, I would agree with what the gentleman said, that it's probably going to go half in both directions because they're going to, if they're backed up at one end, they're going to go to the other end. As far as the trucks coming off 380 and making lefts onto San Mateo Avenue, I've always said, not with a lot of pride, but San Bruno is one of the few cities where you have to go south to go north onto San Mateo Avenue and we've corrected that situation, you can't actually make a left there, you can turn left off of Huntington Avenue and, but the big trucks remain to be a problem. I mean, I've witnessed trucks on that undesignated truck route making left turns, they cross the other lane of traffic and block up that whole intersection, so.
I'm just concerned if the DOT ever took, had come out and inspected the roads, see if it's proper for those trucks because there is a weight limit too for these truckers to come in.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm, I'm concerned about if they say it's okay for them to come through there.
Yeah, and I don't know what studies have been done there, I know we've had, the city has designated truck routes in the past and that's not one of them, okay? But that's something that we're looking at.
Then you've got the United Airlines leaving to work around 3 o'clock in the afternoon and then you have abundance of traffic going through there. So, again, it's all about traffic and trucks, I think.
And again, the little unique situation here is, most times, this council is seated or Planning Commission is seated, hearing the project, studying the project and making the decision, saying yes or no. We have absolutely no authority over the project because the project is 100% in another jurisdiction. It's all within the city of South San Francisco. We're hoping that we can work with the developer, they've shown a willingness to work with us and hopefully with the city of South San Francisco will show the same willingness that we can come to some type of development that works for South San Francisco, for us and the developer.
Sure. Well, I'm for the business, it's just the traffic.
Yeah, that's what you try and do, is get to an agreement that can kind of work for everybody.
Sure, because the way the economy is now, I mean, people have to work.
A thousand jobs, sounds real. A thousand jobs sounds real good.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Anyone else wanting to address the council? Okay, it's your last shot at us because we're going to disappear into closed session, and you get to go home, and we'll stay here for a bit. Okay? Seeing no one, comments from council?
Just very quickly, I've heard the presentation, and I just want to echo, the speaker basically said it all, honestly. But for someone who lives on the west side of San Mateo Avenue and in the potentially impacted affected area, I have great concern. As I walked it late last night from my house to the 1070 San Mateo Avenue, as I drove around the property on Saturday during the weekday, and I know there could be debate and dispute about where the traffic's going to go and how much it will or won't be. But I think trucks are a critical issue. I think the car and the volume that it's going to bring are concerns that need to be addressed. We have looked at making pedestrian safety improvements with the lighted crosswalks. We have a grade separation coming. We have a transit corridor we're working on. We're trying to make improvements in that area, and we want to work together. But we do have to be concerned for our citizens and it's their well-being with the conditions of the roads and the traffic and the safety of the youth and the people that travel it. And I'm hoping that the developer understands where I sit, it's just not, it's firsthand experience and what I see on a daily basis where I live. And so, it's important to me, and it's important to the people of this community, that we do work together and that we understand what's best for both sides. But as you stated, you wanted to work in that community, and I know you mean you want to work in these communities so that together we can come up with a project that benefits everyone.
Other comments from council?
Through the chair.
From McConnell?
Thank you. I have two kind of questions. One, San Francisco has set our water allocation, or will be setting a water allocation, and I know this project is not included in what we had projected would be in our areas, but if so, if we're going to be supplying water to that property, is there any estimate of how much water that might be? I know it's very difficult because we don't know what kind of tenants they're going to have, but some kind of estimate, and if that is going to exceed our water allocation or not? That's one. And then how much jurisdiction or control do we have over the construction, things that are going to be happening, the hours of construction, the noise levels? Do we have any control over that, especially since Caltrain will probably be working at the same time in very close proximity to that project?
On the first question, and I will address the first question first, how, the city manager indicated this development is outside of the city of San Bruno service area. But that really means that the city can provide water to this development, but has no obligation to provide water. Historically, the city provided water to this site in the past consumption, then they, the consumption from this site was included in our historical consumption. But certainly, the city in the future will be under no obligation if the city will not have enough allocation or water available, has no obligation to provide water to the site. If I recall the number properly, they are, they are talking about .1 mgd, the demand for water. On the second question, the city really has no jurisdiction over site control during the construction. The city will have control, legal control, on San Mateo Avenue, and certainly can enforce any illegal activity on our streets. But for the construction mitigation measures should be included in the mitigative, mitigation plan by city of South San Francisco, and the city will have to work closely with the city of South San Francisco to make sure that all of those concerns will be addressed, and those also will be monitored closely by the city to make sure that all of, the plan will be implemented and respected.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
If I could just add to, just one quick comment in addition, the environmental document for the project does not provide any detailed assessment of the water demand for the project. So, community, the public services director's comments are well-taken in that the city does not have an obligation to serve the project. It is assumed that the city would continue to serve the water demand for the project. But, again, we don't have good information at this point that would address, I think what your question also alluded to, which is the future issues related to the city's water supply allocation.
If I could, I'm not going to read more. The trucks are, small trucks, big trucks, whatever, are going to be a big problem there. I too have experienced that whole area. I go to South San Francisco nearly every day, and many times I go either San Mateo Avenue to Linden and find my way or through Spruce. It is, I don't think it's realistic to say that you, that a certain amount is going to go south or a certain amount's going to go north. These employees or whoever's going to go to this property, after the first time or a couple of times that they, they go to this property, they're going to see that the San Bruno Avenue exit is going to be the most convenient. I don't even know what the next, if I wanted to go northbound on 101, if I had to turn north, turn north out of this property, how to get to a northbound 101. I believe I have to go to South Airport. I believe you have to go all the way to Grand Avenue to get on the freeway. Yes, there is more of a convenient southbound entrance closer, closer to the, I believe it's the Linden, Linden exit, but I think it's a roundabout way, and there's going to be, there has to be a lot more emphasis placed on even the vehicle traffic because in and out, they're going to be coming because it's quite clear, it's going to be quite clear how convenient and easy it is and faster to get to 101 through San Bruno. So, I'm very concerned about that, and I don't know how to, how to address that.
Through the chair. Just briefly, this is, in the big picture, a good project for both cities, and we're both impacted financially in a plus side and in the negative side too, with all of the impacts we're going to have. So, I've heard tonight from a developer that sounds like they're willing to work with both cities, even though with San Bruno you don't have near the obligation you do with South City. I certainly hope that Thursday evening, when you refer to their planning commission, you reiterate for the record some of the things you told us tonight about the TDM, making it work, the driveway alterations, some of the positive things, like I said, for the record, that will in fact help us too. So, the impacts are going to be plus and minus for both cities. I don't want them weighted one way or the other. I sure don't want San Bruno to sit here and be the stepchild and absorb all of the negative things, but I will, you know, agree that there are positive things for both cities, and we have to take advantage of those.
Any other comments from council? Okay, with that, the city council's going to be going into closed sessions. We have three items before us this evening, a closed session to provide direction of legal counsel regarding Calvin Jackson versus San Mateo Superior Court, city of San Bruno, et al., RPI Court of Appeal, number A125605, pursuant to government code section 54956.9A. We have a closed session to provide direction of legal counsel regarding claim by Ambrosia Sanchez pursuant to government code section 54956.9C, and closed session to provide direction of legal counsel regarding potential litigation by the city regarding government, pursuant to government code section 54956.9C. There'll be no reportable items to come from the closed session. From there, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, which will be held on August 25th at 7:00 PM here at the San Bruno Senior Center. Thank you.